Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. This is our September 14, 2020, meeting. If we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started with the meeting, I'd like to read a meeting protocol that was provided to all boards and commissions from Janice Small, our small, our corporate counsel. It begins in consultation with Steve Civitelli, the town's health director. The following protocol shall be used for in-person meetings. One, all attendees, board members, and the public should wear a mask. Removal of a mask to speak should be discouraged and only permitted if the speaker is at least six feet from any other person. Two, where possible, maintain six feet of social distancing. Board members should consider changing the seating arrangement to provide distancing. Although this is recommended, please keep in mind that by wearing masks, the 10-feet distance is not mandatory. If you change the seating arrangement, make sure the members speak into the microphone. They do not need to be on camera. They, however, must be part of the recording. Touchless hand sanitizer devices are located throughout the building for public use. The attendees should be reminded of the mask requirement. It's also advisable to recommend to individuals to spread out from other attendees, if possible. Attendees residing in the same household are not required to provide social distancing, but it's encouraged. FYI, the ventilation system has been maximized to increase circulation of outdoor air in town hall. As of March 18, 2020, there are now increased cleanings throughout the building focusing on high-touch surfaces. The Health Department is consistently monitoring the pandemic as it relates to the community and the county case levels. You will be advised if any changes to the guidance provided here within. If an attendee refuses to follow these rules, advise them to leave the meeting. If they refuse, contact the Police Department. Chairperson should consult with staff regarding upcoming agenda and the expected turnout by the public. While no one can know for sure how many people will attend, you should have a general idea. If there are concerns that a large number of people may attend, staff should look into moving the meeting to a larger location. This should be addressed prior to posting the meeting. Generally, the Town Council chambers has been more than adequate to accommodate the public. And finally, if the chairperson has any questions, reach out to your staff, Health Department Director Steve Civitelli, or Corporate Counsel Janice Small. So those will be the general protocol that we will be following this evening, and I certainly encourage everyone to adhere to it, and I fully expect it, everyone will. So at this particular point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Commission Member Jeff Cohen. To my immediate right is Commission Member James Fitzsimmons. To my immediate left is JP Benoit, who is the Vice Chairperson of the Commission. And to JP's left is Jamie Hine, who's an alternate. And Jamie Hine will be sitting in for Rocco Madarazzo, who is not attending this meeting this evening. And at the lower table is Steve Allenson, who is also an alternate to the Commission. On the lower table to my far right is Thomas Talbot. He's our Acting Town Planner. And at the lower table to my left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who is our Recording Secretary. And I'm Jim Seikter, the Chairperson of the Commission. Our next order of business is to consider approval of our August 10, 2020 minutes. And I'd ask any commission members if they have any corrections to the minutes, and if not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve. Planning and zoning commission minutes dated Monday, August 10, 2020.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, before we get into our items on our agenda, I just want to note that item number one, a public hearing, special permit, fill-in excavation, Pfizer at 21 Tully's Road. The applicant has requested that no action be taken on that application, so that will not be heard. Most likely, it would be heard at our October meeting. And that brings us to the next item, which is new business, which is item number two, the site plan for DT Warren Family Trust, 809 North Main Street Extension. If the applicant and/or its representative, please come forward, begin the presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A letter was addressed to you dated August 4, 2020, signed by Roslyn Page from Winterborne Land Services. A letter was sent from the Planning and Zoning Office to the David T. Warren Family Trust dated June 18, 2020. An inter-office memorandum from the Department of Engineering was addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission and received in the Planning and Zoning Office in July 2, 2020. A memo was received from the Office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 6/10/2020. A memorandum was addressed to Tom Talbot, Acting Town Planner from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated September 3, 2020. And we also received a memo from the Department of Engineering dated September 9, 2020. And we also have updated comments from the Fire Marshal dated 9/10/2020, dated September 11, 2020. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant or his representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Sure. My name is Roslyn Page. I'm a professional land surveyor from Winterborne Land Services with an office at 604 Center Street in Wallingford.
David McDonald, the trustee of the property, and it's 210 North Airline Road, Wallingford.
If it's convenient for the commission, I would like to make my presentation.
Absolutely.
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is a request for approval of a proposed storage garage for vehicles associated with the current use on the property, which is a funeral home. The property is located at 809 North Main Street Extension. For your orientation, North Main Street Extension is located here on the right-hand side of the building, on the right-hand side of the map. Walmart property is located to the north and west, and there is a commercial series of offices in a building immediately to the south. The property is located in an RF40 zone. It was originally approved back in the late 1980s as a restaurant, and the funeral home has occupied it now for many years, as I'm sure many of you know. We have, for our proposed application, we have received a variance from the ZBA for the rear yard setback, which is 50 feet in this zone. We requested and received a variance to put the proposed storage building 20 feet from the rear property line. The area for the proposed 1,920 square feet building is outlined in pink on the map here. We have also received at the September meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission, we have received approval for them for our stormwater management system. So now we are here in front of you. The existing conditions are that the existing funeral home is located here. Driveway entrance comes in here. There's parking all along the south side, and then a circulatory system that goes around on the north side and back out. I'm sure many of you have had the opportunity to visit this property. So what the applicant would like to do, as I said, is build a storage garage for hearses and other funeral vehicles at the rear of the property, where it was previously a treed area. It'll be 1,920 square feet. It'll be a Morton building. I do have the building plans on the other side of this board, which I can show you in a minute, but it would be a Morton building. There will be three overhead doors on the south side. There'll be a person door, one person door on the east side, and one person door on the north side, and it is strictly for storage of vehicles. Associated with that, we are proposing 2,800-square-foot asphalt extension to the existing parking. We will remove three parking spaces that are currently located at the back to allow for an access. We will then be able to create seven more parking spaces along the south side, and there will be parking spaces in front of the garage doors that will be used for employees only, so they're not designated as parking spaces for the public. In addition to that, as part of our inland wetlands approval and part of our planning and zoning application, we've been working with the town engineer to improve the small stormwater swale that was at the back of the property that acted as a high-level overflow for the existing dry well system that serves the parking lot in this property. As part of our process through the wetlands and planning and zoning review, my engineer has worked with the town engineer to come up with a larger detention area, which will allow for some stormwater detention, biofiltration, and so on, to improve the stormwater quality of the discharge. There is an outlet which ties into the Walmart system, which has been in place since the mid-1990s, when Walmart, which was then K-Mart, as I'm sure many of you remember, K-Mart came in and they reorganized or rebuilt their entire drainage area, and at that point, they put in this pipe to act as an emergency overflow for this basin. So our engineer has worked with the town engineer to come up with the appropriate sizing of this basin. We do have the site operation and maintenance plan that is required as part of her comments and also part of the wetlands approval, so I do have those, which I can give to the town And one of the few comments that town engineer had left in her review letter was that this current pipe that goes from the final dry well out into this swale is a 15-inch. She would like to see it revised to be an 18-inch with a 1% pitch, and we have agreed to make that as part of our final revised plan. She has also requested that this 15-inch have, and I don't know the technical term for it, but to have a 12-inch cap put on it so that it kind of downsizes it, so it limits the amount of water that can leave, or the rate at which the water can leave. So I think we have covered the town engineer's remaining comments. We did confirm that these dry wells are all existing, which was one of her questions, and that we'll, as I said, revise that pipe size as part of our final comment. So in terms of adhering to the RF40 zoning regulations, we have met all of those. There's a chart on the map that shows existing and proposed conditions. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to the commission to ask myself or the applicant any questions you have.
Sure. Just so I'm clear, on the building, you mentioned the garage doors on the south side, is that correct?
Yes, the three doors. Let me just turn this around.
Sure, that's fine.
This is the south elevation. There'll be two overhead doors and a slightly taller one here. Those will be on the south side. This is the west elevation that faces the west side of Walmart. There'll be no doors there. On the north side, there'll be a person door, pretty much centered, and on the east elevation that faces into the funeral home property, there will be another person door.
And you mentioned there's three parking spaces in front of the garage doors, but those would only be for, you mentioned, just for employees?
Yes.
And I assume there'd be no need to access that building when there is an activity at the property, if there's a wake or something at the property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Hine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple quick questions. The employee parking spaces that we're just talking about, how are those going to be designated? I mean, if you have somebody coming in, how do they know that those parking spaces will be for employees only?
So essentially, we have a small amount of employees. We'll have it marked, no parking, for the purpose of, most likely, and they'll just, you know, we'll just know to park there to keep our cars out of the way and leave more public parking available. And really, the only time that would be needed is if we expected to have a very large service just to preserve some extra parking spots. But getting the cars in or out, the cars that will be there would normally already be out of the garage if we needed them, and the employees who do work there would be in the building, and if a car had to be moved or something, it would be pretty minimal.
And then, my next question is, so the way that I see this, the car would come in from North Main Street, they would go down the south-side aisle of the parking lot. Now, once the car reaches the west end of the parking lot towards the garage, where the turnaround would be, I mean, if they keep going straight into that corner, and they find that all the spaces are taken up, I mean, how do they, is there space enough there to turn around? Or, you know, that's one of my concerns.
This parking area is the standard 60-foot wide with a 24-foot aisle. So if somebody were to drive down in here and into here and discover that these parking spaces were filled, they'd either be able to turn into one of these empty spaces, or they would just have to back out.
Okay, that was one of my questions. I think, so if those employee spaces are taken up, you contemplate that that car would then back up, back into the parking lot and make the turnaround?
Yes, because this is, right now, people drive down here and park in this row here.
Yep.
And if all these are full, then they continue around here, and there are arrows to direct them. So yes, the only concern that will come up is they can't drive anywhere if they drive into this area. But we foresee this really as being mostly employee-only and a little bit of overflow.
Fair enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other commission members? Jim, do you have something? Mr. Talbot, any comments on the application? If you microphone, Tom, please. You might want to turn it on.
How would I do that? Right here. Tom.
There we go.
I think they're fine. The only thing I would like to add is, based on the extent of the work that's shown to the rear of the proposed building as a result of their wetlands application, I think you probably need a bond of maybe $4,000 instead of $3,000. There's a lot more work involved than in the original submission.
Ms. Page, does that conclude your presentation?
It does, unless you have any other questions for me.
Okay, good. Yeah, this is not a public hearing, but we do allow the public to comment on the application. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the application? If so, please raise your hand, come forward with your comments. Seeing none, I will just bring it back to the applicant for any final comments if you'd Would you like to make any final comments, Ms. Page, or no? Okay, good. Thank you. At this point in time, as the applicant's concluded its presentation, there's no other comments from the commission or staff, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we make a motion to approve application 210-20, site plan WT Warren Family Trust, 809 North Main Street Extension. Site plan for a 1,920-square-foot detached garage for the David T. Warren Family Trust at 809 North Main Street Extension, as shown on plans entitled Improvement Location Survey, Proposed Storage Garage, Land NF, David T. Warren Family Trust, 809 North Main Street Extension, Watford, Connecticut, dated 5/22/20, revised to 7/13/20. Subject to comments in a letter from Thomas Talbot, planner, to David T. Warren Family Trust, dated 6/18/20, including a $4,000 sedimentation and erosion control bond. Comments and recommended conditions of approval and memo of Allison Kapaczynski, town engineer, to Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 9, 2020, and comments of Fire Marshal to Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 10, 2020.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Brings us to our next item, item number three on our agenda. It's the site plan for Generations OB-GYN at 150 South Main Street. Again, while the applicant's preparing for its presentation, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Correspondence was received from the Office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 8/12/20. Correspondence was received from the Town of Wallingford Department of Engineering dated September 2, 2020. Correspondence was sent from the Planning and Zoning Office in September 3, 2020, to Generations Obstetrics and Gynecology. A memorandum was addressed to Tom Talbot, Acting Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Wallingford Water and Sewer Division, dated September 4, 2020. A letter was addressed to Tom Talbot dated September 9, 2020, from the Office of B&amp;L Company, signed by John Schmitz. We also received updated comments from the Office of the Fire Marshal dated 9/10/20. We also received comments from the Department of Engineering dated September 14, 2020. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant would introduce themselves, then please begin their presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Is it okay if I sit? You want us to stand?
Oh, no, absolutely. If you would, sir, just pull the microphone maybe just a little bit closer to you, if you would, please.
Certainly. Is it on?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Give it a good tap, and we'll see. Ah, it's on.
Fantastic. Okay, so good evening. My name is Joe Porto. I practice law with Porto, Parisi, and Qualwell. We maintain an office in Hamden, 2319 Whitney Avenue. We represent the applicant, Generation Obstetrics and Gynecology, with regard to the application for modification of the site plan and change of use for 150 South Main Street. The parcel is presently the home of the Lockland-Fitch Jail Law Firm, and it's quite literally right down the street from us. The property sits in a central limited business district zone. The site was, I believe, originally approved for development in 1983. Shortly thereafter, the existing two-story office building-type structure was constructed. The property is approximately 1 half acre in size, rectangular in shape. The application indicates that Obstetrics, Generation Obstetrics, will occupy the first floor, which is about 2,200 square feet, and the law firm of Lockland-Fitch Jail will move up to the second floor, occupying approximately 2,000 square feet. Based on that, the regulations require a total of 23 spaces. John and I appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals, I think, in June of this year, and on the 15th day of June, the ZBA granted a variance, reducing the number of parking spaces by one, thus requiring 22 spaces as opposed to 23. The way the regulations work, the 23 spaces is predicated on 15 for the medical and eight for the law firm. John will explain further, but the modification to the site plan leaves in place the existing curb cut. The driveway remains the same. There'll be no change to the building itself, the foundation, or the exterior of the building, and the parking will not be illuminated. Just a quick thought on, or a quick mention as to the occupancy of the building. Lockland-Fitch Jail now has a total of four lawyers practicing. When COVID passes, there will be certainly multiple times when one or more of the lawyers will be out of the office attending to in-court obligations. With regard to the applicant, the medical office has a total of four locations, so three other locations than the one in Wallingford, with a total of seven physicians practicing in that group. It's anticipated that one doctor will be in this office approximately four to five days a week. So we feel that the space is provided is more than sufficient, and that the modification to the site plan meets the requirements for the zone in which it sits, is consistent with the comprehensive plan of development, and will not offend the health, safety, or welfare, but we ask that you would move on it favorably. But first, I would like Mr. Schmitz to take you through the design.
Thank you. I'm just going to approach. Hello? Good evening. For the record, John Schmitz, civil engineer, project manager with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. Here on the stand is a copy of the site plan, SP1. Represents the proposed plan. The building is shown here in tan, orientally with the plan. South Main Street, up and down on the left-hand side, north is directly up. The Elks Lodge is a budding, the property to the north, residential to the south on the bottom, as well as down the hill to the east side on that side. The light gray area on the plan represents the existing parking. Again, the brown, the existing building. And the dark gray area represents the new parking. We're adding roughly seven or eight parking spaces. So we're pushing the parking closer to the east side. Proposed retaining wall, drainage improvements, infiltration chambers in order to handle the stormwater runoff, as well as a new dumpster pad at this location. We did receive comments from staff, which we've addressed, as far as we've shifted the location of the dumpster, so it's no longer in the setback. We've addressed some of the parking issues, moving parking away from the dumpster. We've added spaces to the rear, which will be striped out for a turnaround, because this is a dead end, so vehicles will be able to turn around. We've also added a new handicap space at this location, well as a new handicap ramp here to gain access to the building. Currently, there's an existing white, six-foot white vinyl fence between these two uses along the front of the site, along this side, the south side. What we propose to do is extend that same fence, create a new fence. to do is extend that same fence, create a new fence, extend it along the south side at this location, as well as along the east side at this location, to buffer the existing residential uses. We'll also be keeping the existing six-foot trees and landscaping that's already there today. That's kind of a rough breakdown of the site, pretty simple, just adding, as I said, seven or eight parking spaces.
Thank you, sir. Does that conclude your gentleman's presentation? Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. I heard you correctly, and I'm looking at page SP1 of the plan. So, the law office requires eight spaces, and the medical office requires 23 spaces, and you requested a variance for one space?
No.
Did I understand that? Okay.
The medical office requires 15, the law office eight, total of 23 required all-in, 22 provided we have a variance for one.
Okay. With that, with the variance, and because it's a, the heavier user would be the medical, the first floor, I'm just concerned about the parking. And I say that because you went through the process of getting a variance, but you only got a variance for one spot. I mean, I guess where's the overflow going to go, if I could be that direct?
We do have 22 spaces on site. There is on-street parking allowed. It is signed, so there is parking allowed on the street, along our side of the street as well. So, again, 22 spaces on site, and I will say unlimited parking on the street, but enough for another two or three cars in a close vicinity along our frontage.
And because the property, and thank you, I think because the property is, it's the, it abuts directly residential, and then it goes to the rest of South Main, as you said, just down the road, I, you know, I'm concerned about the on-street parking there daily because of the, you know, the site drive, which is a incline to get up, you know, and then obviously, if you have people coming in, turning around, there's not, there's not a great amount of on-street before you have the next curb cut, because the next user has two curb cuts, then you have the individual offices. I just, I don't, I don't know if I heard in your presentation about, so someone pulls in and there's no parking, where do you, where do you say you're providing a turnaround spot, if you will?
So, at the rear of the lot, there are two striped areas in each corner, which are, which are striped out for no parking. So, if someone came in and all the spots were full, they could pull into one of those spots, back out, and then leave.
All right. And then the other, the other, while you're right at the map, did you say that there'd be no trees removed in the rear? Because you said you're leaving the existing tree line, but I wonder if you could repeat what you said. I wasn't sure I heard that clearly.
Sure. There would, there would be clearing on site in order to accommodate the parking. Currently, again, the light gray represents the existing parking. The tree line today probably starts about here. There's a probably 15-foot grass strip before the trees, so we'd be clearing trees out to install the improvements. There would be, there would, however, along the six feet, along the rear eastern side of the site, would be preserving all the trees and vegetation in that area, but we absolutely would be removing trees.
Okay. I just, because behind you is residential.
That's correct.
That's what I'm getting at. So, there's no fence proposed in the rear, correct? If I'm not, I see you're going to do a wooden guide rail and a retaining, segmental block retaining wall.
Correct. And a, and a fence along the top of that as well.
A fence on top of the retaining?
That's correct. This same vinyl fence.
I just, I, maybe I didn't hear clearly, so I apologize. All right. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Allison?
I can fix Tom's, but I can't get mine going. There we go. Sorry about that. You mentioned the use of the attorney spaces, that there'd be four attorneys for the eight spaces that are there, and most likely would actually be two or three, given usual court time. And then you mentioned one doctor for the 15. How much support staff for each, the attorneys and for the doctor's office? Because usually the doctor's office has at least one or two nurses, a secretary, a receptionist. So, I mean, how many people are we talking about for staff-wise that are going to fill up for each of these allocations?
Understood. So, with regard to the medical office, according to my client, one staff member will be with the physician that would be in the building. And with regard to the law practice, so COVID has created a lot of changes. In our industry, one of the things it made us aware of is the fact that people can work remotely effectively. So, it is anticipated that even in a post-COVID environment, that some staff members will continue to work remotely. So, it is anticipated that in the law office, there'll be no more than a total of five all-in between attorneys and staff.
Okay. So, just so that I understand, that'll give you a surplus on the attorney's side of three spaces, you know?
Assuming 100% occupancy at that moment between all the lawyers and staff.
And the doctor's office would have a surplus of about 13?
Yeah.
Okay. Any idea as far as how many appointments are usually booked per hour in the doctor's office?
No. To be perfectly honest with you, I do not know the number of appointments that are booked on a daily basis or on an hourly basis, no.
Okay. I mean, you can understand the reason for my questioning, you know, is the, is the number of spaces sufficient for the amount of usage?
Well, I, and I do. And we're certainly here to be helpful and responsive, but the regulations set forth the use. The use has the number of spaces required. We obtained a variance for one. We meet the regulation. So, if, if the commission has concern with whether or not the parking spaces that are required per use in the regs aren't sufficient, the remedy is to amend the regulations, not to require the applicant to provide more parking spaces than the regulations require. So, we, we are giving you guys what you, what you say we need, and additional parking spaces are permitted on the street. So, we think that the circumstances are appropriately accounted for, particularly with the fact that there will only be one physician in office four to five days a week. And the law office will have, you know, again, depending on who's there, somewhere between, you know, two to five people. So, we certainly anticipate more than sufficient parking.
And I appreciate you pointing out the way to amend the regulations, you know, to me. That was, that was helpful. But the question was, and as the correspondence has gone back and forth between our town planner and your office regarding the issue on spaces, I just would like to know what the usage of the spaces would be and how much surplus we would have. That's all. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission members? Mr. Talbot, any comments?
Now, if you go through your file for this, you'll see that they made significant, they made significant changes from their original, original application. I believe they are in compliance with the regulations. The only thing that I would, the only concern that I have, and it's not really an immediate concern, is that at some point, it would be difficult to use this whole building for medical use. That, that's something that should be considered. But as far as what's being proposed tonight, I think they've, what they've proposed is within the regulations, within the parameters of the variance they received.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. From the parking standpoint, I feel comfortable with the explanation that the applicant has given us. I just do have one comment. I just noticed on the, you mentioned to Mr. Fitzsimmons, you do have that vinyl fence on the east side of the property on that retaining wall. But around the dumpster, you're putting just a chain link fence. Is it possible, instead of a chain link fence, maybe dress that up just a little bit and put the vinyl fence around that too? It just, it'll make it look a little neater. And also, you know, it's a residential area and the general area that I think would just-
Happy to do it.
Would improve it. Good. At this point in time, this is not a public hearing, but are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the application? If so, please raise your hand, come forward, state your name and address and your comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. I don't know if the applicant has any final comments that you'd like to make. If not-
No, thank you.
Good. At this point in time, if there's no more comments from the commission members and/or Mr. Talbot, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 211-20, site plan for a conversion of 2,210 square feet of existing first-floor general office to medical office use and an expanded parking area for Generations Obstetrics and Gynecology, PC, at 150 South Main Street, as shown on plans entitled Proposed Parking Lot Expansion, 150 South Main Street, 150 South Main Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated July 27, 2020, revised to September 9, 2020, subject to posting of a $2,500 site sedimentation and erosion control bond before commencing of site work. Comments from the Fire Marshal to Planning and Zoning Commission, dated August 12, 2020. Comments from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, to Planning and Zoning Commission, dated September 4, 2020. Completion of site work parking before medical office occupancy. Comments and recommended conditions of approval and memo of Alice Kapaczynski, Town Engineer, to Planning and Zoning Commission, dated September 14, 2020, and installation of a vinyl fence around the dumpster.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening. Thank you all. You're welcome. Brings us to our next item on our agenda, new business item number four. It's a site plan for MRC Global, 15 Sterling Drive. If the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for its presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
We received, I have two pieces of correspondence. We received comments from the Fire Marshal's office, dated 8/12/20. No comment. Handled letter was sent from this office to MRC Global, dated September 8, 2020, signed by Tom Talbot, Tom Planner. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And again, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation when he's, when he's ready.
My name's Dominic Barnes, 51 Carriage Drive here in town. I'm the local branch manager for MRC Global in North Haven, Connecticut. We apologize, we couldn't produce anybody else with COVID. They're all in West Virginia and Texas. They had to quarantine. So, we come forward to this council and thank you very much, commissioners, for taking the time to see me. We're looking for a modification to the site plan of 15 Sterling Drive to change the scope of use of, I believe it's the southeasternmost parking lot, put a fence around it, and use it for outside storage of steel and polyethylene gas pipe. And that's really it in a nutshell. I mean, there's no drainage issues. It's a big empty parking lot. It's been sitting for a long time. We signed a seven-year lease on the warehouse, which is being built out right now, and we're just looking to change the use of that outside parking lot so we can store our pipe in it. We supply ever-source energy and gas line companies for gas pipe, and that's the scope of our business. And I mean, if you need me to go through over anything, or, like I said, this is my first rodeo here, so.
Well, that's, that's fine. I guess when I was, was looking at, looking at the plans, I didn't, and I quite possibly could have missed it. When you mentioned you're putting a fence around the area, I didn't, I didn't see that on the plans. Did I miss that, Mr. Talbot? I probably did.
There is a sheet that has, that does show the fencing. It's, I don't know if the sheets are actually numbered, but it's in the set that you received, it's the first-
Microphone, microphone.
I could go over it for you. It's the sheet here that has coal at the bottom here. I don't know if I helped you.
Is it the one with the black, with the black lines around?
Yes, sir.
Those spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
It says 194 total spaces, 187 to MRC.
Yep. I, yep, I see that now. And there's going to be two, there's an entrance and an exit, or there's two access points?
Yeah. The main access point would be at the bottom, would be a 50-foot wide double swing gate. We'd be removing that island that's there, located at number nine. I tried to, I actually made this drawing. I tried to number everything. There's a little, little legend at the top that kind of goes over everything. We, we took an, I know the town has regulations concerning privacy fencing, so this particular lot is set up high, and it really, you can't see it from the road. But we do propose a seven-foot-high fence with privacy slats facing the Sterling Drive, and then we're going to do a six-foot-high regular chain link fence around the rest of it, because it's, there's really no, it's either in property or there's elevation to keep you from being seen. And yeah, that main entrance on the bottom, where it's the number nine, will be a double 50-foot swing gate. The top entrance and exit would be not used. It would be there in case it was needed. And, and that's, that's really the size of it, other than, I mean, that's it. It's really, it's real pre-cut and dry, so.
And I'm not, I guess I'm not sure if you'd like to speak to it, or just Mr. Talbot, as far as the reduction in the, just so I understand, the reduction in the parking, the 25% reduction?
You have a section, you have, there's a section in the, in the zoning regulations that in this zone allows for, for a reduction of up to 25%. If you can present information justifying that based on the present use of the building, they have done that.
Mr. Talbot, if you-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get the microphone a little bit closer. We hear the people screaming in the background.
I'm sorry. You have, you have a section in your zoning regulations that allows you to reduce the amount of required parking on a property by up to 25% based on the actual uses of the property as documented by the applicant. You are required to show that there is some portion of the site that can be used for parking if necessary. That's what the, that's the first part of their application. And on that, I think the first sheet, you'll see on the, in the left-hand corner, you'll see the portion of the site that they're saying can be used for parking, and it clearly can. Then they're taking that reduction, and they're taking 190, I think it's 187 spaces of 492, I think, and they're converting it from parking to outside storage. So, it's sort of a two-parter. First, they're asking for the reduction, then they want to take, make use of that reduction to use some of the parking out there for outside storage. And as Mr. Barnes says, if you go out to the site, this portion of the site is not visible from the street. It's really not visible from anywhere. I think maybe up above at certain times of the year, but.
Sure. And just so I understand, once they do the reduction and use the, there's 800, whatever, 180-some spaces for storage, there's going to be, was it 305 spaces that are going to be left for parking? Is that, is that correct?
Correct. 305 spaces will be left.
So, they'll have, they'll have left, that'll be left for parking.
And what, what would happen under this arrangement is, if the uses within the building changed at some point to where the parking requirement went up, they'd be required to provide parking in that area they're showing as, as an area for parking.
And that appears to be more than enough. There's a substantial amount of space there is the bottom line.
Yeah. Yeah. The reduction, their actual reduction is really, they didn't need 25%.
All right. Good. Commission members with any questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. I'm going to take this literally where you say it's outside storage. There's not going to be any temporary, you know, shelter-type structures with a roof or anything initially. Do you see potentially that happening to cover some of that?
The only thing we had debated, and if this commission doesn't approve it, we won't do it. We were debating maybe putting a 20-foot conex box out there for personnel storage. You know, if it's raining, somebody can go inside and get out of rain, to put hand tools in, you know, just something to keep, stuff that you don't want to get wet or rained on. But it, other than that, it's just going to be stacks of pipe. I mean.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. Just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items that you're going to be storing out there, how high do you plan on, on those being? Are those going to be lower than the six- or seven-foot-high fence?
They should be pretty close to the seven-foot-high fence at the maximum. The carbon steel pipe that we would store would be very low and maybe no higher than this table. The polyethylene pipe comes in bundles. It's pre-bundled. It's like a 40-foot-long square of pipe, and we usually stack those five to six bundles high. So, they, they tend to be six and a half, seven feet. So, you might have a little bit poking about- So you, you might have a little bit poking above the seven-foot fence, but not a lot.
Okay. Yeah, because my major concern is, you know, what it looks like from the road, it sounds like that's not really going to be an issue. And then the other thing is that this is a parking lot that is not currently being used at all.
Oh, I think it's been empty for almost 25 years.
Yeah, yeah, so better use of it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other, any other commission members? Any members of the public would like to speak on the application? Oh, finally, we have someone. Please come forward, name and address.
Good evening, Tim Ryan, Economic Development Office. I just want to reassure the commission, I've been working with Dominic, now Mr. Barnes, for several months on the project. I've been down to his facility in North Haven, I've viewed the yard, I've viewed his operation, both internal and external, and I think it's a company we'd be proud to have. I want to thank him publicly as a Wallingford resident, or when his company was looking to expand, that he looked to Wallingford, and is hopefully coming to Wallingford. So this is significantly larger than the site that they have in North Haven, so this is a good growth story. So on behalf of myself, the Economic Development Commission, we completely support the application and hope you would give it approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members from the public? Seeing none, if you have any final comments, certainly you're not compelled to make any.
No, no commissioners, sure, I, chairman, I, I'm just happy to come to Wallingford, I mean, to what, to what Tim said, we, we were happy to push, I pushed hard for a Wallingford location, to bring the tax revenue, it would help the town out a little bit, and I think we're a good company.
Good. Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, if there's no other comments from commission members or staff, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Great job. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 212-20. Site plan for MRC Global to convert 187 existing parking spaces to outside storage at 15 Sterling Drive, as shown on plans entitled, "MRC Global, 15 Sterling Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. Proposed fence line with gating and island removal. Received August 6, 2020, subject to comments of Planner Thomas Talbot to MRC Global dated September 8, 2020, concerning dating of plans."
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved, and if you please just mention to the offices of your company that we certainly appreciate them locating to Wallingford.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
You have a nice evening yourself. Okay, it comes down to number, number five, bond release and reductions. Mr. Talbot, is that ready to be released?
Yes, it is. I think, I think you should have something, if not, it is ready for release.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the release of special permit for Center Earth LLC at 893 North Colony Road?
Mr. Chairman, I move we make a motion to approve bond release, special permit, Center Earth LLC, 893 North Colony Road, application 411-15.
We have a motion to release the bond. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, the bond's released. And now, Mr. Talbot, if you please take us through the rest of the agenda.
Well, actually, most of these administrative approvals are, they've already been approved. There's a survey waiver on Welcome Street that-
Mr. Talbot, man, we're going to have to slap your hands. Your microphone, please.
God's going to come out and scream.
Or something, or something, right? Right. You have a survey waiver for Gapsky at 222 Welcome Street, a survey waiver for Swanson at 54 Washington Street, another survey waiver for Pickett at 36 Wooding Road, an APD permit for Abdul Salam at 1191 North Colony Road, a survey waiver for Parisi at 1262 Barnes Road, a survey waiver for Savinelli at 4 Allison Avenue, and a survey waiver at 360 Main Street for Payne. Those have all been approved, they all went through the-
Okay.
Oh, and also the site plan revision for the Wallingford Sewer Division. That was just a slight revision to an approved site plan.
Okay.
You should have your ZBA decisions in, in the file, in your, in your packet.
Does anyone have any questions with respect to ZBA decisions or the ZBA numbers for the September 21, 2020 meeting? Any comments on-
I think there is a legal action based on that, on one of the applications, one of the decisions for last month, the Center Street application, I think there's a, I think, I think a suit has been filed.
Anyone with any questions? Moving on, I guess we'll go to the zoning enforcement log.
In terms of the zoning enforcement log, I have no information at all, I just-
Does anyone have any questions that would like Mr. Talbot to get some information at a later date? Seeing none? At this point in time, I believe we've concluded our agenda, and at this point in time, I would, yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, under the, on the agenda, under reports of officers and staff, can I ask a question that's not written on the agenda?
Sure, I believe you can.
All right. Does this commission have anything to do with extending outdoor dining like other towns, or is that strictly with the council and nothing for us to do?
I believe that is, that is, that is with the council for the moment. Under the, if I'm correct, under the government's, under the governor's executive order-
Okay.
That, that action can be taken by the town council. I believe they've either extended or looking to extend it through November. There are, there are, there's a small group that's been put together that are looking at, you know, that issue to possibly, you know, extend it once the governor's executive order is, expires. So there, there is a small group that we're looking at, at the outside dining and perhaps some change in, in regulations. Because I think we can all agree that, at least for the last, you know, three or four months, especially in the Uptown area, it's, it's certainly been very active, and it's a very, despite the fact that we're, you know, with the COVID-19, people are wearing masks, they're social distancing, but we've had, you know, we have activities, you know, we have activity, you know, uptown, and then also with some of the restaurants on, you know, on Route 5 with the tents that they have with outside dining. So that's something that we're going to, we're going to look at.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? At this point in time, there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission for Monday, September 14, 2020.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We're adjourned. Have a good evening, stay safe.
Nice job.